Session is called to order, please rise for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magiliw pero saan silang anan, alam ng puso sa titik moy buhay. Lupang hilirang buyan talang magiliw, sa manlulupi kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok sa simoy at sa langitong paghahal, may hilang ang tula at awit sa paglayang nilawahan. Ang isang namuataw at muika gumay naratingin. Ang bituming at haraw niya kailan pang may magidilin. Lupa ng haraw ng war ang ipagsakna, buhay ayamit sa titik. Amili gaya napagmay mahapin, ang lamatay ng daring sayo.
Please remain standing for a period of silent prayer. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, our representatives Abaya, Abayon, Abel Janosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantaleón, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barzaga, Batawil, Batocabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderón, Calixtorobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilaú, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fred, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serrapica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Coanco, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesús, De Venecia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Muhammad, Duabit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Hermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Evardoni, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Periol, Floerendo, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Fuente Belia, Garbin, García Gwendolin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Óscar, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Marc, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hopper, Alosjos, Javier, Co, Conghon, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugán, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lobregat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Zahid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Meliana, Mendín, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Oaminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiwan, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rebilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Máximo, Román, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaría, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Rehto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sabelliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Xingzon, Swan Sing Estrelita, Swan Sing Horacio, Suárez, Ciel Barado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tianco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Di, Umalí, Unavia, Unab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Belarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarrasa Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zárate, Subiri.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 208 members responded to the call.
With 208 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the approval of Journal Number 81 dated May 21, 2018.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. The Journal for May...
Number 81 dated...
Number...
May 21...
81 dated May 21 is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the Chair... The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as the communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading, House Bill 7687, Strengthening the Human Rights Affairs Office of the PNP, Representative Valianno.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 7688, Creating the National Land Transportation Authority, Representative Valianno.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7689, Mandating the Administration of Regular Drug Tests in Correctional Institutions, Representative Valianno.
To the Committee on Dangerous Drugs.
House Bill 7690, Ensuring the Accountability in Intelligence Activities and the Use of Intelligence and Cultural Funds, Representative Valianno.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Bill 7691, Promoting and Supporting the Development and Growth of the Philippine Film Industry, Representative Alianno.
To the Committee on Public Information.
House Bill 7692, Renewing the Franchise Granted to Sierra Telecommunications, Representative Garbin.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 7693, Mandating the Conduct of Emergency Preparedness, Drills and Facilities, Sanding, Storing, and Transporting Hazardous Materials, Representative Ciel Barado.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 7694, Providing Protection to Consumers, Representative Ciel Barado.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 7695, Providing for a Comprehensive Civil Regulation System, Representative Agabaw.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 7696, Granting Philippine Citizenship to Reverend Father Luciano Ariel Feloni, Representative Bilarde.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 7697, Incorporating the Value of Responsible, Fair, and Truthful Utilization of Social Media in Schools and Universities, Government Agencies, Non-Government Organizations, Private Corporations, Representative Yap Victor.
To the Committee on Public Information.
House Bill 7698, Penalizing Unconscionable Lending Activities of Loan Sharks, Representative Yap Victor.
To the Committee on Justice.
Resolution, House Solution 1864, Direct the Committee on Public Order and Safety and Committee on Justice to Inquire into the Assassination of DOJ Prosecutors, Representative Bilaro.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1865, Expressing Profound Condolences of the House on the Demise of Honorable Edgardo J. Angara, Former Senate President, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1866, Expressing Profound Condolences of the House on the Untimed Demise of the Honorable Yupranio C. Ergel, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1867, Recognizing the Importance of the Historic Inter-Korean Summit, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Solution 1868, Direct the Committee on Housing and Urban Development to Inquire into the Collapse of a Wooden Foot Bridge on the Resettlement Site for Sangguangga Siege Victims, Representative Dalipe.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1869, Congratulating and Commending Attorney Mark John H. Simondo for Obtaining the Highest Rating in the 2017 Philippine Bar Exam, Representative Gasataya.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1870, Commending the Iglesia de Cristo, Representative Ciel Barado.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1871, Direct the Committee on Information and Communications Technology to Inquire the Data Beach of 1.2 Million Philippine Facebook Users, Representative Yap Victor.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1872, Expressing Profound Condolences of the House to the Family of Former Senate President Edgardo J. Angara, Representative Bravo Anthony.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1873, Expressing Deepest Condolences of the House to the Brave Family of Former Representative Yupranio Ergel, Representative Bravo Anthony.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1874, Expressing Profound Condolences on the Demise of Former Senator Edgardo Javier Angara, Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1875, Urging the DFA to File a Diplomatic Protest Against the People's Republic of China, Representatives Alianno, Banal, Belmonte, and several others.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
Communications Letter Stated May 4 of Roger Edinho, Deputy Director, BSP.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Report of Attorney Cesar Straight Pareja, Second General, House of Representatives.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports, Report Number 742 on House Bill Number 7749.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 743 on House Bill Number 7750.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 7742746 on House Bill Number 775227754.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, before we proceed on the next item of our agenda, may acknowledge the presence of the guests of Ako Bicol Party List, Representatives Alfredo Garbin Jr., Rodel Batocabe, and Christopher Co., Headed Ako Bicol Party List Regional Headquarters Staff and Municipal and Provincial Coordinators Headed by the Chairperson Ning Alkasar.
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7191. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So moved, Mr. and Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General, is there any objection? Hearing none, the Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 7191, An Act Regulating the Practice of the Criminology Profession in the Philippines and Approving Funds Therefore, repealing for the purpose Republic Act 6506, otherwise known as an act creating the Board of Examiners for Criminologists in the Philippines. Roll call of members consideration, House Bill Number 7191.
Abaya, Abayon, Abel Janosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantaleón, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barzaga, Batawil, Batocabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderón, Calixtorobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilaú, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Predenil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serrapica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Coanco, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesús, De Venecia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Hermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Evardoné, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Periol, Floerendo, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Fuente Belia, Garbin, García Gwendolin, García Jose, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Guana Cristina, Go Marc, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio Dong, González Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hopper, Alosjos, Javier, Co, Conghon, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugán, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lobregat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Zahid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Meliana, Mendín, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Oaminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Binin, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiwan, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rebilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Máximo, Román, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaría, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Rehto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabelliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio... Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansigestelita, Swansiguracio, Suárez, C. Elvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherry, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Puerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Rasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milexio, Yap Victor, You, Samor Markamen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred ninety-two members voting in the affirmative the Chair declares House Bill 7191 as having been approved on third reading Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7295 For this purpose may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting So move Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection Hearing none The motion is granted. Secretary Gen please proceed with the reading of the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7295 An Act Increasing the Authorized Campaign Expenditures of Candidates and Political Parties and Defining an Independent Candidate for This Purpose Amending Section 13 of Republic Act Number 7166 Entitled An Act Providing for Synchronized National and Local Elections and for Electoral Reforms Authorizing Appropriations Therefore and for Other Purposes. Roll call of members consideration House Bill Number 7295. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magseisai, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawin, Batucabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casa Franz, Casa Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Sirillas, Chavez, Chipeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, De Veneza, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Osario, Del Osamontalia, Dimopor Odula, Dimopor Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, El Lago, Enverga, Erise, Iregel, Ermitaboain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Giusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Fre Luis, Feriol, Floirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fente Bella, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Gary Richard, Gary Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Guana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulias, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusos, Javier, Ko, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limkay Chong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatus Huarto, Mangodatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaon, Wominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Rova Puno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansigestelita, Swansiguracio, Suárez, C. Elvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherry, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino. Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Puerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Rasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milexio, Yap Victor, You, Samor Markamen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred eighty-eight members voting in the affirmative and six members voting in the negative the Chair declares House Bill 7295 as approved on third reading Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker before we proceed to the next item may acknowledge first the presence of the guests of Representative Bernadette B. H. Herrera Di, Mr. Teen International Philippines Joshua Helito, Miss Teen International Philippines Alyssa Esponella, Designer Circle Philippines Edwin Uy and Dave Ocampo, Pro West Supremacy Production Incorporated Organizer Headed by Mr. Boyet Santos.
To the guests of Representative Bernadette Herrera Di Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7429 For this purpose may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting So move Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection Hearing none The motion is granted The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill Number 7429 An Act Declaring the Malubal Falls and the Municipality of Roselia Tilim, Province of Sangguangga Cibugay, an ecotourism site and profiting funds therefore. Roll call of members consideration House Bill Number 7429. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magseisai, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawin, Batucabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casa Franz, Casa Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Sirillas, Chavez, Chipeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, De Veneza, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Osario, Del Osamontalia, Dimopor Odula, Dimopor Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, El Lago, Enverga, Erise, Iregel, Ermitaboain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Giusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Fre Luis, Feriol, Floirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fente Bella, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Gary Richard, Gary Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Guana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulias, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusos, Javier, Ko, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limkay Chong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatus Huarto, Mangodatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaon, Wominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Padu- Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Rova Puno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansigestelita, Swansiguracio, Suárez, C. Elvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherry, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Puerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Rasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milexio, Yap Victor, You, Samor Markamen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred ninety-seven members voting in the affirmative the Chair declares House Bill 7429 approved on third reading Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7430 For this purpose may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting So move Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection Hearing none The motion is approved Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill Number 7430 An Act Declaring the Underground Tipan Cave in the Municipality of Naga Province of Sangguangga Cibugay an ecotourism site and profiting funds therefore. Roll call of members consideration House Bill Number 7430. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magseisai, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawin, Batucabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casa Franz, Casa Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Sirillas, Chavez, Chipeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, De Veneza, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Osario, Del Osamontalia, Dimopor Odula, Dimopor Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, El Lago, Enverga, Erise, Iregel, Ermitaboain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Giusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Fre Luis, Feriol, Floirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fente Bella, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Gary Richard, Gary Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Guana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulias, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusos, Javier, Ko, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limkay Chong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Lopez Manuel, Lopez Carlo, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatus Huarto, Mangodatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nugralis Jerico, Nugralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malenyon, Wominal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramirisato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Rova Puno, Robes, Rokamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Savillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansig Salita, Swansiguracio, Suárez, Sielbarado, Tambunting, Tanajilina, Tanmilagrosa, Tansheni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso, Bergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samor Markamen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred ninety-seven members voting of the affirmative, the Chair declares House Bill 7430 approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7433. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill Number 7433, An Act Declaring As Agricultural Land, Portions Of Forest Land Located In Barangay Manok Manok, Municipality of Malay, Province of Paklan. Amending For The Purpose, Proclamation Number 1064, Entitled Classifying Boracay Island Situated In Municipality Of Malay, Province Of Paklan Into Forest Land Protection Purposes And Into Agricultural Land Aleable And Disposable Pursuant To Presidential Decree Number 705, Revised Forest Reform Code Of The Philippines. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill Number 7433. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Akosta, Akosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinumag Seisai, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixt Sorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casafranz, Casaprenil, Katamco, Caetano, Celeste, Serapica, Seriles, Chaves, Chepeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osamontalia, Nimoporodula, Nimoporokalit, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Hermita Boain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Bardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fente Bella, Garbin, Garcia Guendulin, Garcia Use, Garcia Albano, Gary Richard, Gary Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Guriseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Allosos, Javier, Ko, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limkay Chong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatus Huarto, Mangodatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nugralis Jerico, Nugralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malenyon, Wominal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramirisato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Rova Puno, Robes, Rokamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Savillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansig Salita, Swansiguracio, Suárez, Sielbarado, Tambunting, Tanajilina, Tanmilagrosa, Tansheni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso, Bergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samor Markamen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred ninety-eight members voting in the affirmative, the Chair declares House Bill 7433 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7435. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill Number 7435, An Act Reclassifying Certain Public Lands Within The Strip Of Land Five Kilometers From Either Side Of The Aspiras Highway, Formerly Known As Marcos Highway From Ago Province Of La Union To Tuba Province Of Benguet, Covered By Proclamation Number 1754 As Aleable And Disposable Lands. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill Number 7435. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Akosta, Akosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinumag Seisai, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixt Sorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casafranz, Casaprenil, Katamco, Caetano, Celeste, Serapica, Seriles, Chaves, Chepeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osamontalia, Nimoporodula, Nimoporokalit, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Hermita Boain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Bardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fente Bella, Garbin, Garcia Guendulin, Garcia Use, Garcia Albano, Gary Richard, Gary Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Guriseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Allosos, Javier, Ko, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limkay Chong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatus Huarto, Mangodatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nugralis Jerico, Nugralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malenyon, Wominal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramirisato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Rova Puno, Robes, Rokamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Savillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansig Salita, Swansiguracio, Suárez, Sielbarado, Tambunting, Tanajilina, Tanmilagrosa, Tansheni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso, Bergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samor Markamen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred ninety-eight votes in the affirmative, the Chair declares House Bill 7435 approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may I acknowledge the presence of the guests of Honorable Christopher De Venesia, Mr. Dean Wicker, who is the Chief of Staff of Hawaii State Senator Donovan de la Cruz and Counselor Aldrin Soriano of the Municipality of Maganakan Province of Pangasinami.
The guests of Representative De Venesia are welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may I also acknowledge the presence of the guests of Deputy Speaker Reneo Abu, Honorable Danny Dattingaling, Sangunian Bayan, of the second of the Bayan of Municipality of Tingloy, Honorable Tessa Marie de Torres, Honorable Andarosion, Adoracion, Atsensa, Honorable Virhilio Manalo, Honorable Edelbinay, Honorable Evelyn Candava, Honorable Gabino Abante and Miss Shinaida Melo.
The guests of the Honorable Abu are welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up items in the calendar. They are bills on second reading. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Kindly proceed.
First, Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 7402, contained in Committee Report Number 668. And for this, please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill Number 7402, An Act Promoting Telecommuting As An Alternative Work Arrangement For Employees In The Private Sector.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of debate of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the distinguished Chairman of the Committee On Labor And Employment, the Honorable Randy Ting.
The Honorable Randy Ting is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, may I please request that we adopt the explanatory note of House Bill 6322 as my sponsorship speech?
With that, Madam Speaker, I move that we have the explanatory note of the measure as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Since there are no interpolations, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendment is hereby opened.
There being no amendments, Madam Speaker, whether individual or that coming from the committee, I move that we close the period of the amendments.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 7402.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. All those in favor of House Bill, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 7402 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 7506, contained in Committee Report Number 717. And for this, please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill Number 7506, An Act Establishing The National Mariculture Program And Providing Funds Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
To sponsor the measure, Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the distinguished Chairman of the Committee On Aquaculture And Fisheries Resources, the Honorable John John Ferrero.
The Honorable Ferrer is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the explanatory note of the bill be adopted and considered as my sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, we join the motion of the gentleman that we have the explanatory note of the measure as the sponsorship speech. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
There being no objections, interpolations, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period for sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, there being no amendments, whether individual or those coming from the committee, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 7501. Oh, 7506 rather, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. All those in favor of House Bill 7506, please say aye.
Aye ma'am.
Aye.
Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill seven five zero six is hereby approved on second reading. Majority leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill number seven five one zero, in Committee Report number seven two one. And for this, please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill number seven five one zero, An Act Requiring the Philippine Postal Corporation to Print Postage Stamps Depicting Philippine Tourism, Philippine Tourist Attractions and Destinations, and To Affix These Stamps on Outgoing Mail Matters to Attract Foreign Tourists.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby opened.
To sponsor the measure, Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the distinguished Chairperson of the Committee on Tourism, the Honorable Lucy Gomez.
The Honorable Lucy Torres Gomez is hereby recognized. Kindly proceed.
Madam Speaker, your honors, may I manifest that the explanatory note of House Bill number seven five one zero be entered as our sponsorship speech. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
With that, Madam Speaker, I move that we have the explanatory note of the measure as the sponsorship speech. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we, since there are no interpolations, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, since there are no amendments, whether individual or those coming from the committee, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill number seven five one zero.
There is a motion to approve House Bill seven five one zero. All those in favor, please say aye. Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill seven five one zero is hereby approved on second reading. Majority leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill number seven three eight eight, in Committee Report number six six six.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill number seven three eight eight, An Act Granting Philippine Citizenship to Bruce Donald McTavish.
Majority leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the Honorable Carmelo Lasatin II, and this is with authority from the Chairman of the Committee. I so move, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Lasatin is hereby recognized. Kindly proceed.
Madam Speaker, dear colleagues, I move that my explanatory note would serve as my sponsorship speech, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, we join the motion of the gentleman to have this explanatory note of the measure as the sponsorship speech. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
There being no interpolations, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, since there are no amendments, whether from, whether individual or those coming from the committee, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill number seven three eight eight.
There is a motion to approve House Bill seven three eight eight. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill seven three eight eight is hereby approved on second reading. Majority leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Bill number seven five two two, in Committee Report seven two five. And please direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill number seven five two two, An Act Apportioning the Province of Paclan into Two Legislative Districts.
Majority leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Local Government, the Honorable June Acharon.
The Honorable June Acharon is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This House Bill is asking for the approval of the creation of a new district. And like to request, Madam Speaker, that the explanatory note be considered as the sponsorship speech.
With that, Madam Speaker, I move that we consider the explanatory note of the measure as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, since there are no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, since there are no amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill number seven five two two.
There is a motion to approve on second reading, House Bill seven five two two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill seven five two two is hereby approved on second reading.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Majority leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill number seven four five five, in Committee Report number six eight four.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted.
And Madam Speaker, kindly direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill number seven four five five, An Act Granting Another Period to Find Manifestation of Intention to Validate Titles issued under Civil Reservation Case Number One, GLRO Record Number Two One One, Pursuant to Republic Act Ninety Three One as amended, and as provided under Presidential Decree One Two Seven One as amended.
Majority leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Natural Resources, the Honorable Randy Ting.
The Honorable Arnold T is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that the explanatory note be considered as the sponsorship speech.
We join the motion of the gentleman, Madam Speaker, to have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted.
Since there are no interpolations, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The period of amendments is hereby opened.
Since there are no amendments, Madam Speaker, whether individual or those coming from the committee, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill number seven four five five.
There is a motion to approve on second reading, House Bill seven four five five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill seven four five five is hereby approved on second reading.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Bill number seven four nine six, in Committee Report number seven zero seven. And please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill seven four nine six.
House Bill number seven four nine six, An Act Providing for the Delination of the Specific Forest Limits of the Public Domain and for Other Purposes.
Majority leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted.
To sponsor the measure, Madam Speaker, I move that we again recognize the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Natural Resources, the Honorable Arnold T.
The Honorable Arnold T is hereby recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note be considered as my sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection?
Madam Speaker, we join the,
Please proceed.
The motion of the gentleman to have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, since there are no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby opened.
Since there are no amendments, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill number seven four nine six.
There is a motion to approve House Bill seven four nine six. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill seven four nine six is hereby approved on second reading. Majority leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up bills for Thursday and Friday.
Is there any objection?
Local bills, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up the omnibus approval of the following local bills. House Bill, House Bill number seven four, seven nine, seven four eight four, seven four eight five, six two nine zero, six two eight nine, six two nine one, seven four nine zero, seven four nine one, six two nine two, seven four nine seven, seven five zero zero, seven five zero one, seven five zero two, seven five two one, seven five four nine, and seven five five zero. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The period for sponsorship and debate is hereby opened.
Since there are no interpolations for these local measures, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, since there are no amendments for these local measures, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments for these local measures is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move for the omnibus approval of the aforementioned local bills, Madam Speaker. I so move.
There is a motion to grant omnibus approval to the aforementioned local bills. All those in favor, please say aye. Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. The aforementioned local bills are hereby approved on second reading. Majority leader.
Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill number sixty-four and Senate Bill number three one, three one seven, entitled Strengthening Compliance with Occupational Safety and Health Standards. Madam Speaker, in accordance with the rules, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report is hereby ratified.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I have a brief manifestation on the OSH.
Kindly proceed.
Yes. Madam Speaker, today is exactly, yesterday is exactly a week after the commemoration of the third year of the Kentex fire tragedy in Venezuela that claimed the lives of over seventy-three workers, most of whom are women. Today too, the Bi-Cameral Panel approved a landmark legislation seeking stricter compliance to occupational safety and health standards, or OSH. Rather than a mere coincidence, this is the concrete results of workers' sustained and tireless struggle for justice with the Macabayan Block and other partners. Since Gabriela first filed the measure in twenty fourteen, there have been numerous tragedies: Kentex, HTI in Cavite, NCC fire in Davao, and the Manila Pavilion Fire. And throughout these tragic flashpoints, hindi po tayo tumigil sa pangungulit sa komite na aprobahan na ang OSH bill. Sa wakas, masasabi nating may ibinunga ang ating kampnya para sa mas ligtas na kalagayan sa pagawa. Masasabi nating inisyal itong tagumpay sa laban natin para sa katarungan para sa mga manggagawa. Subalit, hindi dito natatapos ang ating laban, kailangan nating igiit pa rin ang kriminalisasyon ng paglabag ng mga kapitalista sa OSH standards. The Bi-Cam version does not include imprisonment for erring employers and contractors in the range of penalties. Nevertheless, we recognize that the updated amount for administrative fines is an advance from the current mislai level of one thousand to ten thousand pesos. With the measure now proceeding to the President's desk, we raise the challenge to the Duterte regime to enforce this measure mandatorily even among the untouchables inside special economic zones. Dapat may masampolan, at higit sa lahat, dapat may managot sa pagpapambayas sa kaligtasan ng ating mga manggagawa, lalo sa loob ng ecozones. Madam Speaker, binabati namin ang mga organisasyong pang manggagawa sa makasaysayang araw na ito. Tuloy ang laban para sa mas ligtas na paggawa, mabuhay ang uri manggagawa.
Majority leader.
Madam Speaker, before we proceed, let us recognize the guests of the Honorable Bai Sandra Semah. We have the signed BBL map. This is headed by Duma Mascud. And we have the Women Organization Movement for Bangsa Moro, or WUM. We have Society of Empowered Royal Ladies in Empire We have Society of Empowered Royal Ladies in Empire Cotabato, or SERLEC. And we have the Sustainable Initiative of Grassroots Network for BBL, or Sign BBL.
Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 7436 and Senate Bill Number 1620, abolishing the road board and providing for the distribution and management of the motor vehicle users' charge collections. They are as follows: Representatives Xavier Jesús Romualdo, Celso Lobrigat, Daquila Carlo Cuha, Ron Salo, Joel Mayo Almario, Aurelio Gonzalez Jr., Angelina Tan, Evelina Escudero, Estridas Juan Sing, and Anthony Bravo. I so moved, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The said members are hereby designated to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee.
I move for the change of referral of the following measures. First, House Bill Numbers 532 and 4325, regulating the packaging, use, sale, distribution, and advertisements of electronic smoking devices, from the Committee on Trade and Industry to the Committees of on Trade and Industry and Health. Second, House Bill Numbers 3330 and 4810, regulating the use, sale, packaging, distribution, advertisements of vaporized nicotine products, from the Committee on Health, the Committees on Trade and Industry and Health. House Bill Numbers 5961 and 7104, streamlining the Regulatory Commission on Energy, renaming the Energy Regulatory Commission into the Philippine Regulatory Commission, from the Committee on Energy to the Committees on Government Reorganization and Energy. And House Bill Number 213, resolution expressing the sense of the House of Representatives that the Philippine government urges the government of Japan to formally acknowledge, apologize for, and accept its responsibility over the sexual slavery of young women commonly known as comfort women by the Japanese Imperial Army during World War II and provide compensation to the victims, from the Committee on Women and Gender Equality to the Committee on Foreign Affairs. I so moved, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The said, the change of referrals of said House bills are hereby approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we go back to take up bills on second reading.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Kindly proceed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Bill Number 7525 in Committee Report 726. And please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill 7525, an act increasing the monthly pension of senior veterans, thereby amending RA 6948 as amended.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Veterans Affairs, the Honorable Batawil.
The Honorable Ricardo Batawil is hereby recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that the sponsorship, that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 7525 be considered as my sponsorship speech.
We join the motion of the gentleman, Madam Speaker, to have this explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, since there are no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby open.
Madam Speaker, since there are no amendments, I move to be close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move to be approved on second reading, House Bill Number 7525.
There is a motion for the approval of House Bill 7525 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 7525 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up unfinished business.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 7442 in Committee Report 681, and please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill Number 7442, an act providing for the special protection of children in situations of armed conflict and providing penalties for violations thereof.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status is that we are in... Before that, Madam Speaker, I move that we, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the Honorable Kit Belmonte, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Kit Belmonte is hereby recognized.
The parliamentary status, Madam Speaker, is that we are in the period of interpolations. And I move that we recognize the lady from Gabriela, Arlene Rosas, for her interpolation.
The Honorable Arlene Rosas is hereby recognized.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Um, noong nakaraan po, ginoong sponsor, humilig po ako ng ilang panahon para sa mga ilang katanungan kaugnay sa children in situations of armed conflict. Ang una ko pong sinabi ay kaugnay sa pagbabalangkas ng formulasyon o konteksto ng definisyon ng child associated with armed groups. Totoo po ba na ang nakalagay pa rin dyan ay Paris principle pa rin ang gagamitin para sa formulasyon na ito?
Ah, maraming salamat po sa tanong na 'yan. Kung babalikan po natin, hindi po 'yun 'yung unan 'yung tanong. Pero, okay lang po, diretsyo po tayo. Tinanggal po sa framework 'yung pagpasok ng Paris principles, as basic principles. However, brino din po 'yung definisyon ng children in situations of armed conflict to include 'yung mga bata na hindi lang actually combatants, pero nasa mga areas na may actual existing armed conflict para maproteksyonan sila. At pinasok po dito 'yung principle na kinokonider sila as zones of peace, which is likewise covered by the Paris principle, but it is more unique unto this bill.
So hindi po buong-buo na ginamit ang Paris principle. Meron lang mga certain portions na sinasabi ninyo. Ano-ano po 'yung mga portions na iyon kung sa zones of peace natin pag-uusapan?
Okay. Um, the Paris principle set out six main criteria that the government or the law is required to meet. Number one, mandate and competence, a broad mandate based on universal human rights, norms, and standards. Autonomy from government, independence guaranteed by statute or constitution, pluralism, adequate resources, and adequate powers of investigation. 'Yung mga elements na 'yun po ay incorporated more or less sa bill. Although tinanggal na ho 'yung reference to the term Paris principles sa substitute bill, the broadening of the definition is actually beneficial to children concerned as the protection for their welfare will be extended to them even if they are only incidental to the fights. Those actually engaged in armed conflicts are now considered victims instead of children in conflict with the law. This bill aims to extend the mantle of protection to all children in situations of armed conflict, not just those who are holding firearms.
Okay. Naniniwala ba ang batas na ito sa definisyon ng child associated with armed groups na hindi kinakailangan na may roong direktang sangkot? Sinabi ninyo na po 'yan ano? Kasi kahit walang direktang sangkot ang bata sa armadong tunggalian, para mataguri ang... Um, ano po ang tawag ninyo? Kasi merong sinasabi na child warrior. Ginagamit niyo po ba 'yung terminong child warrior?
Ah, hindi ko ginagamit 'yung termino na 'yun. In fact, ang basis, ang whole purpose ng batas na 'to ay iconsider 'yung mga bata na nasa conflict situations as victims.
So ang alimawa po na...
Okay. Ngayon, ang sinasabi niyong broadening ng definition. Um, for example, um, anak ng combatant. At ginagay siya in harm's way dahil anak siya ng combatant, sakop siya ng batas na 'to. Pag sinasabi niyo rin na isang bata na ginagamit as a career ng isang armed group or even ng government forces, sakop sila ng batas na 'to.
So ibig sabihin po, 'yung definition ng child involved in armed conflict ay kahit 'yung nagluluto, 'yung nag-aabot ng mensahe, nagbibigay ng tubig, no? Sa isang armadong grupo o tao, pwede niyo ng tawagin na sila ay child involved in armed conflict?
Kailangan po natin ilagay sa konteksto po 'to. Kailangan po natin ilagay sa konteksto 'to. Um, ang urgency ng billho na 'to ay dahil nag-iiba na ho 'yung concept o 'yung reality ng digmaan dito sa atin. Hindi na lang ho 'to simpleng, ah, hindi na lang ho 'to simpleng mga kapatid natin na may pinaglalaban at nasa bundok sila or nasa kanayunan sila na pinaglalaban nila. Ang pinag-uusapan po natin dito ay 'yung mga sitwasyon katulad ng Samwangga o ng Marawi. Kung saan mga kabataan mismo in the middle of the actual firing zones ay against their will or because of deception or even voluntarily dahil nanloko sila, ay nasasangkot sila, nalalagay sila sa danger situation. Ano ibig sabihin nito? Maaari nga, nasa loob ng campo o nasa loob ng kutak ng, not necessarily the rebel forces eh, even sa loob ng military, for example, a government installation or a government unit in the danger zone, in the conflict area, na ginagamit nila 'yung mga bata as runner nila o ginagamit nila anak ng sarento, for example, na gustong tubulong sa tatay niya, gustong magluto doon, siya nalagay sa conflict situation at nalagay siya sa risk and victima siya. Therefore, kailangan sakop siya ng batas na 'to.
Madam Speaker, precisely the point po ng pagtatanong namin. Kasi, um, 'yung sinasabi natin, iko-cover ang lahat eh, ang buo. Wala namang, um, including all eh, no? Sinasabi niyo nga, kahit dun sa mga rebel areas, sa iba't-ibang mga lugar, et cetera, all children ang iko-cover niya. Kaya po, mas importante na mabusisi natin kung ano-ano ba 'yung mga different areas na ito na sinasabi natin.
Madam Speaker, ako ay bago lang na nagsosponsor ng batas na 'to. In fact, kung babalikan ko po 'yung kasaysayan ng batas na 'to, um... Okay. Noong nakaraan Kongreso po, binusisi ito ng tatlong extensive meetings ng isang TWG, nung Sixteenth Congress. Noong Fourteenth Congress, pinasa ito on third reading after a long process of TWGs. And kahit na pinasahuto on third reading, tuloy-tuloy pa rin ho tinatalakay na mga concerned groups itong batas na 'to. Noong last Congress, in fact, hindi ito nasalang sa plenary despite the extensive discussions. And, uh, in fact, sabi po ng ating Chairman at ng Committee Secretary, bago ito dumating dito sa plenary, ay ilang TWG'ning po ang tinalakay, ang dinaanan ng bill na 'to. So kung pag-uusapan po natin 'yung mga, ang mga extensive na pag-uusapan, ay palagay ko po, long overdue na po. In fact po, noong renatify po ng ating batas, ng ating Senado, 'yung batas ay 'yung international convention na, na humihingi ng ganitong batas, ay 2,003 pa po ata. And every Congress since noon, pinag-uusapan na po itong batas na 'to. And ngayon, dumating na po sa atin ang Samwangga, ang Marawi. Um, hindi pa natin alam kung sino, kung ano-ano pa 'yung nangyayari kinukumbinsin ang mga, mga iba nating mga kababayan, 'yung mga kabataan na nadadala sila. For example, kung hindi po natin mapasaang at makuha ang peace sa Mindanao, ay 'yung mga extremists, 'yung mga fundamentalists, 'yung mga kuwan dalhin nila uli dito 'yung mga kabataan. Kaya kailangan po natin ang batas na 'to.
Babalikan ko po 'yung tanong ko, kawagney dun sano. Sa definisyon ng paano kalang batas ng armed groups, ito ay tumutukoy sa armed non-state actor or non-state entity engaged in armed violence against the state or its governmental armed forces or against other non-state armed groups actors or non-state entities. Hinuhugasan ba ng paano kalang batas na ito ang anumang paglabag na gagawin ng estado o pagrecruit o paggamit ng mga menorde edad at mga bata bilang kasangkapan sa gera?
Of course not, Madam Speaker. Of course not. In fact po, kung titignan po natin ang kabuan ng batas, mas mabigat po ang aktwal na restrictions sa ating government and state forces, which encompass at least the military and the PNP. Yes. Government forces, in fact, subsection N, governmental armed forces refer to the armed forces of the Philippines together with its reserve and auxiliary forces, including paramilitary forces, the Philippine National Police, and other law enforcement agencies.
Dito po kami kinakabahan talaga dahil napapaloob sa non-state actors, entities, ang mga paramilitary groups na directly tumatanggap, alam po natin 'yun, na directly tumatanggap ng mga orders sa government state forces. Kaya po 'yung nababayaran, at 'yun po 'yung may mga kaso ng iba't-ibang mga paglabag...
Tama po kayo dyan.
...sa mga bata. Hindi ko na po siguro iisa-isahin 'yung mga, mga kaso ng mga bata na may paglabag, no? Ang state forces natin. Napakarami po actually. Um, meron tayo. 'Yung mga case ng summary case...
In fact po, kaya po natin kailangan ng batas na 'to, Madam Speaker. And by definition po, I'm sorry for interrupting, but by definition po, exactly subsection N specifies that paramilitary groups, uh, paramilitary and auxiliary forces under the control and supervision ng ating state forces ay included sa definition na 'to.
Okay. 'Yung mga case and summary po ng mga pagpatay sa mga bata, later ko na lang siguro 'yan i-aano. 'Yung...
By all means, Madam Speaker.
Sa definition of terms, na mention po 'yung attack on schools, hospital, places for worship, child development, daycare, evacuation centers, and other public places. Napapaloob po ba dito ang mga IP schools, evacuation centers?
Dapat lang po, Madam Speaker.
'Yung mga schools, mga structure with or without marked visible boundaries, which is recognized and known by the government as a learning space?
Madam Speaker, kung babalikan po natin 'yung mga usapan sa TWG, na nandun po, as I recall, 'yung ating bagiting na representative ng Gabriela, specific na minention 'yung na-recognize po, na-rerecognize. And in fact, kahit po 'yung barangay kapitan o barangay kagawad ay kinilala po, or even 'yung mga health worker or 'yung social workers sa community, nakita, na-recognize po nila by actual or by implication 'yung isang center, isang place as a center for education or health or care for children, ay sakop po sila ng batas na 'to.
Sakop po sila ng mga batas na ito, pero actually, 'yung reality po na meron tayo...
Wala po tayong pinagtatalunan sa reality, Madam Speaker. Wala po tayong pinagtatalunan sa reality, kaya po natin kailangan ma-implement ang batas na 'to.
Ang reality po, binabrand sila. 'Yung mga schools, institutions, 'yung mga hindi binibigyan ng permit, iniipit 'yung permit, sinasabi na sympathizer sila ng mga communities na ito. So therefore, nagkakaroon po ng napakaraming mga cases dyan. In fact, ang realidad po na meron tayo, for example... In fact, ang realidad po na meron tayo, for example, ang mga affected Lumad schools po natin sa Salugpongantatanu Igkanogon Community Learning School, Mindanao Interfaith Services Foundation, Omezvi Academy, Father Fausto Tentory Memorial School, Tri-Farmers Program for Community Development, Tribal Filipino Programming Surigao del Sur, Alternative Learning Center for Agricultural and Livelihood Development, Center for Lumad Advocacy Network Incorporated, Rural Missionaries of the Philippines Lumad School Project. Walong membro po ng PTCA and one student were killed by suspected military operatives. Seventy-eight individuals, mostly volunteer teachers and Lumad students were victims of frustrated killings. AFP troops encamped in thirty Lumad schools affecting 1,221 Lumad students and seventy-four volunteer teachers. Fifty-six Lumad schools, mostly land schools in Region 12 were forced to cease operations due to intense militarization. Nagsarapo, 2,209 Lumad students and ninety-eight volunteer teachers were affected and displaced. Seven,766 Lumad students and 451 volunteer teachers were part of the 25,344 Lumad community residents having threatened, harassed and intimidated by the AFP, paramilitaries and local government units. Eleven,498 Lumad people were victims of displacement caused by all-out war and martial law in Mindanao. Four,050 mostly Lumad students and fifty-three volunteer teachers were affected by indiscriminate firing carried out by AFP, CAFGU and paramilitary group Alamar. One,298 Lumad residents, sixty-three students and twelve volunteer teachers were affected by aerial bombings in three communities of Sarangani Province. Eleven,446 individuals, mostly PTCA members, volunteer teachers and Lumad students were vilified and red-tagged. One,111 PTCA members, fifteen Lumad educators and one Lumad student were illegally arrested and detained with trumped-up charges. One,392 Lumad students and eighty-three volunteer teachers were affected by destruction of school properties committed by the AFP and Marine Battalion landing teams. One Lumad student is yet to be surveyed after being abducted by suspected military agents. All in all, five,35 incidents of different forms of state-sponsored human rights violations and attacks on Lumad schools and communities in four regions of Mindanao were committed by the state under the Duterte administration since July 2016 up to March 2018 and three hundred eighty-five of which, or seventy-two percent, were committed during the reign of martial law in Mindanao. So lumalabas po sa summary ng mga cases, napakarami po nating kaso ng mga ganyan. Pero ang sinasabi po namin, dahil iko-cover niyo ang lahat, eh di baka mas delikado naman po itong batas na ito para sa mga bata, lalong-lalo na 'yung mga vulnerable na bata na kinuconsider namin dito. Kung ito nga hindi nagawa ng paraan eh, di ba? Tapos sasabihin niyo po, magkakawa kayo ng batas na magpo-protekta sa bata, no? I-insure natin, napoprotektahan natin 'yung mga bata. Baka naman mag, mag, magkaroon pa ng mas lalo, tayong maraming mga cases kung saan ang impunity ay napakalakas, no? Yun po 'yung sinasabi namin.
Pwede na po ako, Madam Speaker.
Hindi po ito, mga, mga...
Mga, one line lang po, ang sagot po. Precisely kung bakit ho kailangan natin ng batas na'to. In fact po, under Chapter 3, Section 9, Paragraph D, Item Number 4, dito sa pa'no ka lang batas na'to, precisely po, kinakasuhan at ginagawang bawal po ang false branding at liable ho dito kahit sinong actor sa armed conflict, whether state, state-sponsored or ah, outside ah, outside groups, non-state players po.
Yes, pero, Madam Speaker...
Pero, wala pa ho kasi nitong batas na'to. So maluwag talaga at talagang madaling, madali ho talagang ikutan ang state impunity. With this bill po, mahigpitang kasi malinaw na malinaw po ang mga parameters.
Yes, Madam Speaker, ginawang sponsor. Dito po sa inyong Chapter 7, Rehabilitation and Reintegration, Rescue and Release. Very particular po kayo sa Section 22, Rescue Rehabilitation Reintegration. Let me go, the State shall institute policies, programs and services for the rescue, rehabilitation and reintegration of children in situations of armed conflict. Sa Section 23, Letter C, upon the rescue or surrender of SIAC, government agencies in particular the AFP, the PNP, the Department of National Defense, DND, the local government units, other concerned government agencies or non-government organizations in possession of the SIAC shall report immediately within twenty-four hours the incident of the L... to the LSWDO and the Council for the Welfare of Children, CWC. Ibig sabihin, ang magre-rescue ay AFP, DND. Paano if paramilitary groups under AFP or AFP...
Hindi po, I, I, Madam Speaker, if I could correct the impression or I should say misimpression from my colleague from Gabriela, specifically po, linalagay lang natin 'yung specific requirements para sa state players. Bakit po? Kasi nga po, dahil may specter nga po ng state impunity. Dahil nga po, may presumption ng regularity ang actions ng state forces, ng government forces. Therefore, kaya po, mas specific po natin linalagay 'yung mga restrictions and requirements sa kanila. Pero, this does not mean na an ordinary civilian or a participant in the armed conflict can be involved or can help to rescue the victims, the children victims of armed conflict. In fact, I think under a previous section, Section 21, I'm not sure if it's Section 21, pero precisely sinasabi po do'n na may impunity from suit ang any person or entity or group na rin e-rescue ang mga batang victims na'to ng armed conflict.
Ang hirap-hirap pong paniwalaan sa panahon...
Mahirap po talaga, kasi hindi pa ho natin nasusubukan.
Actually, sa Section 20, oo, kasi sa panahon ngayon na... Well, i-mention ko lang to, bago ko i-mention 'yung medyo ano. Sa Section 27, Monitoring and Reporting System, the state through IACC, SAC shall ensure the implementation of the provisions of this act and shall submit to the President and to the Congress of the Philippines the annual report thereof. Ahm, sa nangyayari na nagsabi ang presidente na bobombahin ko ang mga Lumad schools, parang ang hirap pong paniwalaan na mapoprotektahan ang mga bata, no?
Hindi po tayo nagkakatalo diyan, Madam Speaker.
Tapos, habang ang ekonomiya natin ay matindi ang ibinabagsak sa kasalukuyan, habang meron po tayong mga nagpapahirap na mga pa'no ka la, ng mga patakaran, pa'no ka la, batas katulad ng train law, na lalo humihirap 'yung kalagayan ng mga bata, parang we expect na...
Hindi rin po tayo nagde-debatte diyan.
We expect na...
Madam Speaker.
Sa pamamagitan ng batas na ito ay makakatulong talaga ito sa ating mga bata. At habang ang, ang realidad, realidad po, lalo na sa sinasabi nating Zone of Peace, which refers to the site with sacred religious, historic, educational, cultural, geographical or environmental importance which is protected and preserved by its own community and officially recognized by a governmental authority, it is not merely a demilitarized zone but a sanctuary that operates within ethical principles of non-violence, free from weapons, acts of violence, injustice and environmental degradation. Sa totoo lang po, hindi naman to nangyayari sa mga... Lalo na sa Marawi, ilan po 'yung mosque na nasira sa Marawi, di ba?
Wala po tayong pinagtatalunan po diyan. Pero ito rin po 'yung, Madam Speaker, ito rin po 'yung, kaya po tayo going out on a limb para sa BBL. Kaya po tayo going out on a limb para sa mga prinsipyong pinanindigan po natin. Hindi rin po natin masasabing perpekto ito o may katiyakan o maga, masasa, magagawan ito ng paraan para marisulbahan ang mga batang victima ng armed conflict. Pero, kesa sa wala, kesa sa nangyayari 'yung Marawi, 'yung Samwangga Siege, nangyayari 'yung mga bata sa Lumad school na pwede na lang silang sakupin ng walang malinaw na batas na nagsasabing, "Hoy, non-prescriptible ang ginawan niyong kasalanan sa mga batang ito." Hoy, mataas ang penalty sa mga ginawa, sa pagto-torture niyo o pagbe-victimize ninyo sa mga batang ito. Therefore, kailangan po natin talagang ipilit ito or gawan ng paraan para maging batas talaga ho'to ang pa'no ka lang to, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, ginawang sponsor, napakarami po ng mga cases na hindi naman hanggang ngayon nabigyan ng hustisya. Ang case po ng summary of killing and branding of children of child soldier, si Christian Roy Noceto na fifteen years old. Ang case summary niya po, on February 15, 2012, around 10:00 in the evening, Christian Roy Noceto ah, with Gino Banias, fifteen years old, and Francis Abanilla, eighteen years old, asked permission to their parents that they will be accompanying J.C. Perez, thirty-one years old, to the forested area in the part of Barangay Atingay, Magdalena and Barangay Suba, Mahai-Hai, both in Laguna Province, to hunt for fruits, bats and frogs to sell. Every night, the four went on to hunt. Around 12:10 in the morning of February 16, 2012, the residents of Barangay Atingay heard gunshots and after a few minutes, it stopped. Around 12:40 AM, military truck full of soldiers passed by the community and it was followed by an ambulance. The residents said that the ambulance was carrying the wounded Gino and Francis and the lifeless body of Christian. The wounded persons were brought to Lilio Hospital by the soldiers and the body of Christians was brought to the funeral home, but was left unattended and has not been undergone, and has not undergone an autopsy until 2:00 in the afternoon. While the lifeless body of J.C. Perez was left in the area, according to the provincial police who conducted investigation on the incident, the four were mistakenly identified by the military as members of the New People's Army. The four allegedly fired at the soldiers using the airgun rifle and the military elements fired back at them. On the incident area, the investigation have recovered fifty-three bullet slugs, M14 and two slugs of caliber forty-five. Christian Nocete suffered. Ang case summary po ng frustrated killing and denial of humanitarian access, meron din po tayo ng 2013. On April 3, 2013, around 6:00 to 6:30 in the evening, Roque Antivo, eight years old, was killed and Larry, twelve years old, and Renzo, thirteen years old, hit by bullets after around eighteen soldiers of the Alpha Company of the 71st Infantry Battalion Philippine Army led by Lieutenant Colonel Jerry Borja opened fire at them while they were traversing the road in Porok Six, crossing Kidaranga, Kidaraan, Special barangay Mascareg, Anitapan, Mabini, Compostela Valley Province. Before the incident, Roque and Larry, together with their uncle Renzo, helped their relatives to let, to tend on their farm, which is about thirty minutes walk or five minutes motorcycle ride from their house. The family intended to visit their vegetable garden and harvest their corn crops. The three children were tasked to fetch water in the nearby stream while Roque and Larry's stepfather, Sonny, went to hunt birds for dinner. It was about 4:00 in the afternoon when the three, Roque, Larry and Renzo, accompanied their uncle Ronel to hunt for wild cats on the hill just above their farm lot. After a while, the family decided to go home as it was already getting dark. About 5:50 to 6:00 PM, they headed towards Kabonulan, abandoned road just above their farm where Sonny left his motorcycle. And while walking, Larry was carrying one-fourth sack of shredded corn while Roque and Renzo was carrying root crops. When they have arrived, they left their harvested crops beside the motorcycle ready to be tied up. Sonny then urged the three kids to go on ahead since it was too risky to have them ride a single motorcycle with them that will negotiate a rough terrain. He then told them to convene at the bulldozed road about 250 meters from Kabonulan. It was between 6:00 to 6:30 PM and three kids started walking in a single line. Renzo was first in line, followed by Roque, who was carry, carrying the flashlight to lit their way and Larry was the last in line. When they heard a loud explosion, they were astonished that were the ones fired upon. Larry shouted, shouted out, "Mga bata, mi sir, we are children, sir." Then he rolled on the ground and continued shouting, "We are children, sir," while sustaining small wounds on the face. Larry went on to the location of his brother Roque, was flat on the ground and could no longer stand because of the gunshot he obtained. Larry carried his brother Roque while calling his name but all he heard was groaning in pain. Meanwhile, Renzo managed to run towards the location of Sonny despite that he was also hit in his chin and shoulders. Trembling in fear, informed Sonny that they were shot by soldiers. After then, within forty meters, Sonny came riding a motorcycle with Renzo and another person. Sonny then shouted to the soldiers that according to him, he knew their leader, a certain Lieutenant Liorca. Then soldiers started to appear. Sonny inquired why they shoot his children and a soldier responded that they only fired at the top of the hill where they said that there were some enemies uphill. The certain Lieutenant Liorca ordered the victims to leave the place. Sonny and the children immediately boarded the motorcycle and rushed towards their house. However, just only seconds when they arrived, Roque blew his last breath. Larry, who sustained the gunshot, gunshot in his chin and left shoulder, was admitted to the hospital and Renzo also hit by splinters, splinters in his left face. The survivors are now experiencing harassment in the hospital during that time and there were soldiers guarding them. Hindi po rin 'yan bago ngayon, in fact, ang pinakalatest po natin na merong pinagbintangan sa Mindanao na bata, no? At pinatay recently, no? At sinasabi na parang ang dali-dali lang ng excuse na sila ay sinasabing mga NPA. They were branded as NPA. Kahit po hindi totoo, kahit sinasabi ng mga pamilya, pagkatapos po ng mga pangyayari, parang ganito po, 'yung krimen, 'yung krimen na ginawa ay gagawan pa ng panibagong krimen na ipapato. So, paano po 'yung mga ganitong cases sa ganitong klase ng batas na ipapasa natin?
Parang, parang precisely po kung bakit kailangan po natin ng batas na'to. Ahm, hindi ko po kayo dedebatehin sa mga kaso, na mga sitwasyon na mga bata eh, eh, na dali sa crossfire o na pagbintangan. In fact po, yun 'yung sinasakop ng batas na'to. 'Yung false branding, 'yung pag-target na mga kabataan, ah, in fact, tinataasan 'yung mga penalties kasi ine-equate ang ilang klase ng pag-abuso sa bata as violations against international humanitarian law, which makes the crimes in-prescriptible, which makes ah, the penalties ah, higher, including the auxiliary penalties. Pero hindi, hindi lang po 'yan, Madam Speaker, if I may, if I may po.
Yes, Madam.
Ahm, kasi po, alam niyo, tinitignan ko ho nung ginawa tong batas na'to. Nung, nung the long, difficult road para ilabas po nila tong batas na'to. Napansin ko po na 'yung mga, mga colleagues natin, hindi lang ho, 'yung mga actors na directly involved sa armed conflict o 'yung may relation sa armed conflict, sila po 'yung number one na, or 'yung main na may objection sa batas na'to. In fact, kung titignan ko po 'yung records, 'yung transcripts, it was the state security forces that raised the initial objections. Then ah, there were ah, colleagues na, colleagues natin who have direct contact with communities and families na talagang naramdaman nila 'yung armed conflict. Yun 'yung mga unang nag-o-object dito. For example, ah, I think CRC, for example, so the Children's Rehabilitation Center, sila ho mismo na, I have a very, very ah, warm history with CRC. Nung estudyante po kami, ah, ang aming mga projects ay for the benefit of CRC. Marami rin po akong mga colleagues ah, from the Student Council days na naging responsible officer sa CRC. And yet, ah, pagdating dito, ang one of the, along with our colleagues from the Armed Services, ang CRC 'yung nag-o-object sa bill na'to. Ako po, ang pananaw ko ho dito, mahirap po talagang magtiwala. Mahirap po talagang paniwalaan na may pag-asa atong mga ganitong sitwasyon ay tong mga gan, mga batas katulad nito kung ikaw mismo ay lubog do'n sa aktwal na conflicts. Kung ikaw mismo nakita mo, naramdaman mo 'yung mga violations of the law on either side. Ikaw mismo nakita mo kung pa'no na-violate ang human rights ang ah, o pa'no nag-create ng trumped-up charges or pa'no na dali ang mga civilians na incidental po. Ahm, hindi ko ho pwedeng ah, bawasan or ah... or idisparage 'yung ganung point of view na mga kaibigan po natin. Ang sinasabi lang po natin eh, kaya nga po, kailangan ilagay nahon natin sa batas para hindi nahuto sa whims ng the lieutenant on the ground, or the commander on the ground, or the patrolman na, na nasa bundok, na nasa mainit na sitwasyon, na, if you get my point, Madam Speaker?
Madam Speaker, ginong sponsor, 'yung sinasabi nyo po, paano po ma-eensure, no? Kasi kahit naman 'yung, paano tayo ma-assure? Kahit naman 'yung mga ibang batas katulad ng RA seventy-six-ten, katulad ng special laws ng RA ninety-three forty-four, 'yung iba pang mga batas on children, ay hindi naman na-iimplementa ng maayos. Paano pa kaya itong batas na ito mag-a-assure, no, sa atin?
Alam niyo, magandang, magandang, magandang point 'yan. So, RA seventy-six-ten, o 'yung minors in conflict with the law, for example, naaalala ko nung early days, in fact, hanggang ngayon, in fact, hanggang ngayon, madaming mga questions. In fact, one of the early debates na pinaguusapan natin dito sa halls of Congress ay 'yung pag-adjust ng minimum age of criminal responsibility na mga kabataan. Tamaho kayo diyan? Hindi ho perfect ang implementation ng mga batas. In fact po, linggo-linggo, araw-araw sa mga barangay ko, ang mga kaso ng bousy na mga kabataan na, na, na minors in conflict with the law, minors in conflict with the law, and hindi rin ho perfect 'yung rehabilitation or 'yung protection measures para sa kanila. Pero, malaki na po ang kaibahan kesa sa noon na wala pa nung mga ganyang batas. Noon, eh, pwede akong paluin ng tatay ko, pwede akong paluin ng teacher ko, pwede akong, oo, pwede, pwede kong awain 'yung missis ko ng basta-basta. Ngayon, meron mga batas na nagsasabing, pag ginawa mo 'yan at nahuli ka, malilintikan ka. Hindi ibig sabihin perpekto ang implementation, hindi rin po ibig sabihin na perpekto ang batas. Pero kaya po tayo nandito sa hollowed halls ng Congress na'to, inelect po tayo ng mga distrito natin at ng mga sektor po natin para busisiin ang mga batas na 'yan, at ayusin para mas angkop para sa mga tao po.
Yes, Madam Speaker, dapat talaga, no, tumutulong 'yung batas. Pero 'yung mga indicators po, kahit po sa situation of Filipino children natin sa kasalukuyan, in fact, hindi po talaga ganun ang reality, ano? Kaya po sinasabi natin, we should be very careful sa pagpasa ng mga batas na magagamit ng estado, sa lalong pagsasamantala at pangapi, sa paanong paraan, no? Tinitignan po natin 'yung kabuo ang sitwasyon ng mga bata. Sabi nga kanina eh, i-contextualize natin, diba?
Exacto po.
Alam po natin, ang high levels of inequality ay manifested among population groups and geographic areas in almost all economic and social indicators na meron tayo. It impacts on the situation of children and youth. Despite economic growth na mga sinasabi ng administrasyon ng mga nakaraan, children from poor families and households are predisposed to various social risk and vulnerabilities that could result to reduced food consumption, sickness, and disease dropping out from school. Napakarami po nating mga cases ng ganun. Meron din po tayong low-performing regions concentrated in Mindanao, mainly the ARMM. Zamboanga Peninsula, kung saan nagkaroon nga ng marawi, ano, Mindanao talaga 'yan, pinakamatindi. And Karaga Region, although two regions in Luzon were highest in poverty and underweight prevalence. In fact, ang issues natin ngayon, napakarami nating batang stunted ang growth. Davao Region, Region eleven, was among the lowest in elementary education, while Soc. Sergeant was among the lowest in secondary education. On the other hand, the Zamboanga Peninsula was the highest performer in the infant mortality, having the lowest at fourteen deaths per one thousand live births, followed by Northern Mindanao and Bicol Region in Luzon at nineteen deaths per one thousand live births. Hanggang ngayon po, namamatayan pa rin tayo ng maraming mga bata. 'Yung children in need of special protection, children living in poverty are most vulnerable to violence, abuse, neglect, and exploitation, and they need ample protection measures, including legal protection, policies, and programs to address the special needs. These children are among others, those without family or parental care, left behind with disabilities, hazardous working conditions, those who are commercially and sexually abused and exploited, trafficked children in prostitution and in pornography, in conflict with the law, and those involved in drugs, living and working in the streets, those affected by armed conflict and displacement, those from indigenous populations, emergency situations, affected and displaced by human-induced and natural disasters. So, ang dami pong dapat asikasuhin sa mga bata. Children victims of violence, child abuse, maltreatment, or other forms of violence continue to afflict children right in their very homes, in schools, and in communities. Cases of child abuse served by DSWD were recorded at six thousand one hundred ninety-six in two thousand nine, four thousand seven hundred one in twenty-ten. Ngayon po, parami ng parami, kasi habang dumadami 'yung mga cases katulad ng sa marawi na nadi-displace, mostly ang mga bata, nadi-displace. Ngayon, walang regular na trabaho, mas maraming batang naapektuhan, mas marami talaga ang mga kalagayan, no, ng bata. Palalanang-palala, lalo ang kalagayan ng mga bata, kaya marami talaga ang mga cases na ganito. Ganyan, abandonment, thirty-point forty-eight percent, sexual abuse, twenty-six-point fifty-three percent, neglect, twenty-two-point ninety-five percent. In fact, may naitalapu tayo sa Gabriela, sa mga reports sa amin, na seventy-five percent ng mga rape cases ay mga bata. Ganun po ang meron tayo. Sa children of indigenous peoples who live in remote areas usually accessible only by food, have limited access to basic social services such as health centers and schools, mortality rates among infants, under-fives, and mothers are higher among children of indigenous populations than among the majority population. So, eto po 'yung mga, ang dami-dami nating dapat asikasuhin. And itong batas na ito, baka mag-backfire sa atin. Yun po 'yung sinasabi namin, dapat walang room para mag-backfire sa mahumayang Pilipino, diba? 'Yung ganitong mga klase ng batas.
Parang, yeah, Madam Speaker, if I may be allowed to beg to differ with Lady from Gabriela. In fact po, I agree with the lady sa data na binabanggit po niya. And precisely po, kung bakit kailangan natin ng mga batas katulad nito. Dahil po, 'yung mga most likely natamaan ng armed conflict ay 'yung mga marginalized children ng mga marginalized sectors ng ating lipunan. 'Yung mga nasa kanayunan, 'yung mga nasa mga barong-barong o squatter communities ng urban centers na pwedeng sakupin, 'yung mga lumad na nasa bundok na walang access sa education. Napakalayo nila, and napakahirap, even with our modern technology, napakahirap nung access nila sa proteksyon ng batas, sa basic services, et cetera, et cetera. All the more, sa tingin ko po, kailangan po natin maglagay ng batas para po, hindi po sila tinatamaan o nagiging biktima ng conflict situations arising mismo from the social inequalities ng mismong lipunan po natin. Madam Speaker.
Diretso po, Madam Speaker, ginong sponsor, what is the point ng batas na ito sa ganitong kalagayan ng mga bata? Paano nila to magagamit, no, for their safety? Lalo na, kung ang danger na sinasabi natin, nagmumula sa AFP at nagmumula sa state, no, sa estado.
Para po, para po, madali po sitwasyon natin. Madami pong ninarate ang kagalang-galang na representante ng Gabriela. Kung tama po 'yung pagkaintindi ko po sa mga binanggit po niya, 'yung karamihan kung hindi po lahat ng binanggit niya po mga kaso at sitwasyon ay maari na pong parusahan under nitong batas na'to. For example, 'yung, 'yung bata na nabarel dahil pinagkamalan daw siyang NPA, or 'yung lumad school na naoccupy, under the specific provisions po ng batas na'to, sa'ko po, and state players, whether, whether nag-iimplement lang sila, o sila 'yung nagutos, ay liable dito sa batas na'to. Pero hindi lang po ito sa state players. All armed groups, all, all, all independent entities na engaged in armed conflict or using force ay pwedeng liable at covered ng batas na'to.
Okay. Madam Speaker, ginong sponsor, gusto ko lang banggitin na 'yung climate of impunity na meron tayo. In committing human rights violation, nagpa-pervade pa rin ito sa ngayon. Ito po 'yung major stumbling block to our goal of ensuring children in situation of armed conflict are protected. Ngayon po, sinabi naman po siguro sa posisyon ng CRC, ng Children's Rehabilitation Center, that the government should address poverty, unemployment, landlessness, low wages, injustices, and lack of basic services. And by resolving the root cause of the armed conflict, which is the main assurance, that all children will fully enjoy their rights. Yun po 'yung gusto nating sabihin, hindi po itong batas na ito, baka ito pa nga 'yung makakano.
Tama po, Madam Speaker. Pero paano po kung mangyari uli ang isang marawi? Paano kung mangyari po ang isa pang Zamboanga? Paano po kung something similar happens na hindi po simpleng basic inequalities ng lipunan na pinaguusapan po natin, kung hindi po eh, other, other causes? Paano po natin pro-proteksyonan 'yung mga bata na caught in that simple, in that conflict situation? Hindi po black and white lang. Tama po, dapat lang po talaga, ayusin po natin ang ekonomiya natin, ayusin natin ang basic inequalities. Wala po tayong pagtatalo po dun. Pero, real and material and actual na kinakaharap natin mismong sa mga ninarate na, ninyo po, na mga actual situation na may mga kabataan talaga na put at risk victims mismo ng armed conflict o ng armed, ng mga puwersang gumagamit ng armed force. Therefore, kailangan po natin now, immediately, as soon as possible, ng isang batas para maproteksyonan sila. Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, ginong sponsor, 'yung sinasabi natin na i-root out 'yung cause ng armed conflict, even po 'yung sa usapin ng marawi, has to do with economic and...
Wala po tayong pinagtatalunan diyan, Madam Speaker.
Lahat po 'yan ay ganun.
Tama po.
For my last, ano po siguro, Madam Speaker, hayaan 'yung basahin ko na lang kung ano 'yung nais naming sabihin at posisyon, kaugnay diyan. Ang panukalang batas nitong Seventeenth Congress ay halaw lang din sa mga naunang pinasa. Simula noong Fifteenth Congress, katulad po ng pagbanggit ng ginong sponsor, kaugnay sa karapatan at proteksyon ng mga batang involved or naapektuhan ng armadong tunggalian. Much as we agree that the rights and welfare of children should be the paramount consideration in formulating programs and policies of the government, the problematic contents of the aforementioned bills primarily the inclusion of the Paris Principle, as its basic framework, have convinced us to strongly oppose its passage. Ito po 'yung, po pwede na 'yung nagluluto lang, 'yung mga bata involved na sila lahat, no, 'yung nag-inutusan lang, 'yung nandun lang sa area, no, nandun mismo sa area, ay po pwede ng sabihin na children in armed conflict. Ang pinalawak na definisyon ng child associated with armed groups na nakapaloob sa Paris Principle ay abuso, tingin namin, at malisiosong nagagamit ng state sa anti-insurgency campaigns nito by falsely and wantonly branding children, especially in rural communities as being recruited or used by non-state armed groups. In fact, lumalabas nga na wala pang hustisya 'yung mga nakaraan na naganap. At ina-assure tayo ng batas na ito na magkakaroon ng hustisya. Sa mga susunod pa, sa lohika, balangkas prinsipio at kontextong ito mismo, ang nagbigay ng lisensya and immunity blanket sa government forces and its paramilitary groups to persistently perpetuate human rights violations against children and residents in communities they tag as controlled areas of revolutionaries, MNLF, MLF, or BIFF. Ang paggamit po sa Paris Principle mismo na justify para sa pambi-biktima ng mga, ng estado sa mga kabataan at menorde edad, sa kadahila ng sila ay residente ng mga komunidad na ito. Parang dahil sila ay tagadun, so automatic implicated sila dun sa ano. Living in these areas may now be construed as being associated with the non-state armed groups and therefore part of legitimate military targets. Having parents, neighbors, and friends belonging to people's organizations that have been alleged by the state as front organizations of the armed groups may also make children vulnerable to attacks and make them subject to programs and interventions for children associated with armed groups. Ang panukalang batas na ito ay maglulunsad lamang ng, sa pag-alis sa mga bata sa kanilang komunidad papunta sa mapangabusong kamay ng estado. Arbitraryong paghuli at pagdakip sa mga bata mula sa mga komunidad at inaguriang sympathizers ng mga revolucionaryo o ano mang armadong grupo. Hindi man kaila sa atin ang mga sinasabi na mituluhiyaw, na hobby ng AFP sa mga tinatawag nitong child soldiers pagba-brand nito. Mula twenty-ten hanggang twenty-sixteen alone, twenty-eight children have been systematically and falsely branded as rebels. Matapos itong dumaan sa harassment, interrogation, torture, illegal arrest, and detention while somewhere arbitrarily killed and declared as armed. Ngunit malakas ang evidensya nagpapasinungaling sa mga kwento ng AFP. In fact, 'yung latest nga na sinasabi namin, 'yung case ni Ato na minor, menor de edad, sa Davao ay isang pagpapatunay ng mga nagaganap at nagpapatuloy na ganito. Meron ding case kamakailan kung saan nagkaroon kami ng resolution, nagpasa kami ng resolution ng buong makabayan dahil sa dalawang bata na tinorture at nakatakas lamang. In fact, tinorture at sila ay inilibing ng buhay at sila ay sinunog ng buhay. Buti nga po ay nakatakas sila, no? Yun 'yung pinaka-recent naming ano, so nagpapatuloy talaga ito hanggang ngayon. Ayun nga, sa Children's Rehabilitation Center and organization upholding children's rights, being falsely branded, accused, detained, arrested, or charged as children associated with armed groups, subject children to extreme trauma that could hinder their physical, intellectual, and social, emotional development. At the same time, it may affect not only their self-concept but also their worldview involving concepts such as human rights and justice. Tapos, ang panukalang batas na ito, ngayon, tayo daw, ito ang mas magpapatibay sa blanket ng AFP sa panghaharas sa mga menor de edad at bata dahil sa panukalang batas mismo na ito may immunity ang kahit sino mang baga-assist sa pag-rescue ng isang menor de edad. With this basis, ang Children's Rehabilitation Center considers the passage of the bill as a step to institutionalize the AFP's long history of child rights violations and provide their escape from accountability by labeling children victims as child soldiers. Yun po. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Maraming salamat, ginong sponsor.
Maraming salamat din po. Tapos na rin po 'yung pag-uusap po natin, and... Wala na? Wala na?
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, next to interpolate is the lady from Act Teachers. I move that we recognize the Honorable Franz Castro.
The Honorable Franz Castro is recognized.
Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. So, sa ginong sponsor, mga ilang katanungan lang...
So, sa ginong sponsor, mga ilang katanungan lang po, paglilinaw sa title at saka 'yung paggamit po nung mga batas na sinait po nung batas na ito and at the same time po, 'yung umpung focus dun sa parental accountability. So, would the good sponsor yield to some questions?
Of course, Madam Speaker, from the second lady from Gabriela.
I'm not from Gabriela.
I stand corrected, Madam Speaker.
Mula sa mga guro, ACT Teachers party list.
Galing sa teachers.
Mister Sponsor, dun po sa title ng ating pinop proposed na batas, providing an act providing for the special protection of children in situations of armed conflict and providing penalties for violations therefore. So, dito po ah sa batas na 'to, pinapatunayan natin at nag-aagree pa tayo na talagang sa ating bansa ay nag-eexist ang gera. So, dito po ba sa pagpapasan, proposed batas na ito ay nag-eexist ang gera among our people?
Armed conflict. May broad definition po. Depende po sa legal definition of terms, mas expert po siguro ang iba nating colleagues. Pero ang ibig po sa nating sabihin ng situations of armed conflict, ay kung saan may situations locally.
So...
Basahin ko po 'yung definition as defined dito sa batas na 'to. Armed conflict refers to armed confrontations occurring between governmental armed forces and one or more armed groups or between such groups arising in the Philippine territory. This shall include activities which may lead to or are undertaken in preparation of armed confrontation or armed violence that put children's lives at risk and their rights violated. Hindi po ibig sabihin na may gera ang buong Pilipinas. Ang ibig lang sabihin po, may situation na may armed conflict po.
Okay. Dun po sa sagot ninyo, Mister Sponsor, Madam Speaker, kahit natin directly tinatanggap, so tinatanggap natin na there is an existing civil war. Pwede po ba natin ma... dun po sa study. Siyempre, nagkaroon tayo ng ganitong batas dahil nagitan natin sa sitwasyon, lalong-lalo na sa kanayunan, sa ibat-ibang lugar ng ating bansa na nag-eexist ang gera sa pagitan ng gobyerno at nung tinatawag nating mga armed forces din na naglalayo ng iba pang mga prinsipyo o paniniwala, gaya po ng halimbawa 'yung NPA, 'yung MNLF, MILF. So, tinatanggap natin ito dahil sa ganitong prinsipyo. Tama po ba, Mister Sponsor, Madam Speaker?
Pwede po natin sabihin 'yun.
Okay, tinatanggap natin 'yun. Doon po sa scope, Mister Speaker, Madam...
Madam Speaker.
Ay, Madam Speaker, Mister Sponsor, paano po ba natin nadedetermine at sino po, anong otoridad ang magdedetermine nung conflict area? So, so yun, meron po ba ditong definisyon sa ating pinop proposed na batas about dun sa conflict areas? Paano po natin madedifferentiate 'yung conflict area dahil merong naglalaba ng dalawang puersa as compared po dun sa government versus dun sa revolutionary forces as the government versus dun sa mga tinatawag nating terrorista? So, ito po ba ay, at 'yung batas po ba ay sinasakop din ang batas na ito? 'Yung ganung scope?
Maaari po bang ipaliwanag niyo po 'yung tanong niyo? Hindi ko po masyadong nakuha, Madam Speaker.
So, Madam Speaker, ang tinatanong ko po ay 'yung scope ng batas na ito, so paano natin nadedetermine 'yung mga conflict areas? Kasi, kung titignan natin, parang mahirap ma-determine. Ano ba talaga 'yung ano, armadong labanan between 'yung sa revolutionary forces na tinatawag at saka 'yung tinatawag nating terrorista? Nakatulad ng describe natin dun sa Marawi, sa Marawi situation. So, lahat po ba ng mga bata na nasa ganitong sitwasyon ay covered nito?
Technically po, kung babalikan po natin 'yung binasa ko pong definition kanina, pag nasa armed conflict situation ang mga bata, eh covered po sila ng batas na 'to.
Okay. So, 'yung scope, so sa mga schools, halimbawa, Mister Sponsor, Madam Speaker, 'yung mga school po na tinatawag nating school, zone of peace, di po ba nakalagay dito sa ating... nakalagay po dito sa ating mga definition, definition AA, zone of peace refers to a site with sacred, religious, historic, educational, cultural, geographical, et cetera. So, kinoconsidered po natin 'tong zone of peace, so ibig sabihin, ito mga zone of peace na ito po, protektado ng batas na ito?
Opo. In fact po, ang ginagawa, ang minimity ng batas na 'to ay kahit sinong bata na nasa conflict situation, whether nasa school o nasa bahay o mismong armed combatant, ay dapat iconsider siya as zone of peace. Victim siya at dapat proteksyonan ng all, lahat ng panig, sa lahat ng panig sa armed conflict na 'yun.
So, pati po person, mga personahin.
Mga bata po.
Lalo na 'yung mga bata.
Opo.
So, halimbawa po, wala po sa zone of peace, oh, sorry. Halimbawa po, wala po sa conflict areas, pero nakakaranas itong lugar na ito ng militarization.
Sakop kaagad po 'yan.
Brought about by the government forces.
Sakop po kaagad 'yan.
Paano po ito makaconsider?
Sakop po kaagad 'yan.
Hindi, paano po mapoproteksyonan? Halimbawa po ba, halimbawa po, ito po, alam naman natin, Madam Speaker, Mister Sponsor, may mga eskwelahan tayong itinatag ng ating mga komunidad, itinatag ng ating mga mamamayan dun sa komunidad dahil hindi naaabot siya ng ating gobyerno. Halimbawa, mga private schools, mga ALs, mga kung ano, na hindi naman siya covered ng, ng ano, ng conflict areas na tinatawag natin on how we describe it here in this, ano, in this proposed law. Paano pa pananagutan ng gobyerno, 'yung ganun, kung halimbawa mismong armed government forces 'yung nagmimilitarize dito sa lugar na ito na hindi naman natin tinuturing na conflict areas, halimbawa?
Pumasok po sila, tinanggal, finorse nilang umalis 'yung mga bata sa eskwelahan, for example. Sakop po sila nito. Sakop na sakop po sila ng batas na 'to.
Pati po ba dun sa mga nag-evacuate, halimbawa Mister Sponsor, nag-evacuate, dinala sila sa isang lugar na, na zone of peace, halimbawa, o malayo na sila sa conflict. Sakop pa rin po ba ito? Sakop pa rin?
Depende po, interesting po 'yung tanong ninyo. May mga specific requirements po sa batas. Kung kinoconsider niyong re-nescue 'yung mga bata from a conflict situation, may mga requirements po na specific ang batas. For example, kailangan within 24 hours, tinurn over sa local government authorities, 'yung mga bata po. Pag, pag hindi po nakumply, for example, among the requirements, pag hindi po nakumply itong mga requirements na 'to, 'yung tinatawag na blanket, 'yung rescue, 'yung impunity dahil sa rescue, liable po sila sa batas na 'to.
Okay. Ah, thank you, Mister Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Focus naman po tayo doon sa Section 9, Letter E, on parental accountability. Cited laws but actually nowhere in those laws can be said to be a basis to hold a parent accountable for so-called children in situation of armed conflict. So, Mister Sponsor, pakisight nga po dito sa mga nakasight na mga batas like PD 603, RA 7610, RA 9208, RA 10364 on trafficking in persons, RA 9231 on child labor, RA 9581 on crimes against IHL, crimes against humanity. Pakisight nga po Mister Sponsor, 'yung mga specific provisions dun sa nabanggit nating mga batas na minimention dito 'yung parental accountability for CISA or conflict, children in conflict.
Kung maaari po, tulungan po ako nung, ng kaibigan natin from Gabriela. Ay, from ACT, again, PD 603. Ano nga ba uli ang PD 603?
Child and Youth Welfare Code.
Okay. Article 59, subsection 11, provides parental accountability for children carrying firearms regardless of ownership. RA 9208, ano po 'yun?
Trafficking.
Trafficking. Section 6D of the law includes parents or legal guardians as qualified trafficking. RA 9231, ano po 'yun?
On child labor.
On child labor. Section 6F of the law provides parental accountability for the crime of child labor. RA 9851, ano po 'yun?
Crimes against inter... crimes against humanity.
I- international, IHR.
Oh, IHR.
Section 2C declares the state policy that children, the state policy of children as zones of peace. RA 10364 po. Ano hong RA 10364?
RA...
10364.
Mister Sponsor, wala po akong nabanggit na...
Oh, sorry.
So, kung may dadagdag niyo po. Hindi, ang tanong ko lang po, pakisight po dito sa mga batas na binanggit po natin 'yung specific provision ng parental accountability involving children in conflict situation. So, parang wala po siya?
Hindi po. For example po, 'yung RA 603, ano pa uli 'yun?
Child and Youth Welfare Code.
Okay. Sabiho niya, pag 'yung bata ay kumakarga ng baril, may dalang baril, ang siyang bata, liable ang parent niya o 'yung guardian niya regardless of ownership ng batas. Relevant po'to dahil ang pinag-uusapan natin ay mga bata sa armed conflict situation na kunwari may dalang baril, liable din ang parent. For example po, and we can go down through the list of laws po, na ganun. Madam Speaker, your honor.
Medyo hindi pa po ako satisfied sa sagot Madam Speaker nung ating kagalang-galang na sponsor. So, sinasabi natin, children in situations of armed conflict defined as all children involved in armed conflict, children affected by armed conflict, and internally displaced children. Reading this bill as a whole, CISA as those members of the communities affected in war who are involved in war in one way or another. So, halimbawa po, Mister Speaker, sa isang community na lugar ng sinasabi nating conflict areas, so apektado po sila nung tinatawag nating gera, di po ba? So, kung hindi naman po sila, halimbawa, involved, 'yung mga, 'yung mga community na dito, ano po 'yung proteksyon nung batas na ito? Dun sa mga community na 'yun? Hindi na po ito ano ha, tungkol dun sa children? Pero siyempre, pag sinabi nating community, involved na dito 'yung parents, 'yung children, at 'yung mga tao po sa community.
Hindi, wala po ako sa posisyon ngayon para sagutin 'yung proteksyon ng buong community bukod sa 'yung mga proteksyon na already existing under 'yung mga existing laws po natin. Ang sinasabi ko po, under this proposed bill, eh 'yung mga bata sa situation, dinala sila sa gera, umunta dun ang isang platoon ng marines or dumaan dun ang isang squad ng mga rebelde MILF, nalagay na sila sa armed conflict situation. Pag nalagay sila sa ganong situation, applicable na ho 'tong panukalang batas na 'to. Ang sinasabi ko po, ang point po ng parental accountability ay simple lang po. 'Yung existing laws, katulad ng PD 603, RA 9208, 'yung may mga sakop siyang mga sitwasyon. May mga sakop siyang sitwasyon na may, na mga batang nasa loob ng conflict, armed conflict situation. For example, yun na nga, 'yung 603, 'yung batang may dalang firearm. Automatic liable ang magulang niya o 'yung guardian niya. Yan, child trafficking. Kinuha 'yung bata dahil sa, from an armed conflict situation, four sibling linipat sa isang lugar at pinaghahanap buhay dun or, or ginungat, liable din ho ang magulang dun.
Thank you, Mister Sponsor, Madam Speaker. On sections, on qualification or qualifying circumstances for parental responsibility, sa tingin po ng representasyong ito ay two broad. Una po ay involvement ng child is due to parental action or inaction. Parents ratify the involvement of the child and child acted as parent's agent or servant. A dangerous weapon or instrument. Masyado po itong broad at dito po, sino po 'yung magdedetermine? Kung sino po 'yung pwedeng maparusahan, maparusahan, 'yung parent ba? 'Yung nagre-red tagging, 'yung nagmimilitarize or ano? So, sino po ang magdedetermine ito? So, parang masyado pong...
Thank you for that question, Madam.
Masyado.
Kaya, naais ko lang ho isingit before that. Under subsection L, may karapatan din 'yung bata to be with their families, especially with their mothers during evacuations and in evacuation centers. So, may special protections para sa kanila. Ngayon, under the provisions ng batas na 'to, dun sa pagresolva ng mga cases regarding itong actual na sitwasyon na 'to, ineempower ng batas na 'to ang mga family court. Kung naencounter po natin 'yung mga family court sa mga ilang taon na nagpa-practice po ako, special ang mga applicable rules sa child witnesses, sa proteksyon ng kabataan, ng rules of evidence so that napapaboran 'yung interes ng kabataan. Therefore, pag pinagtatalunan po natin ay sinong nagdedetermine po nito, ineempower po natin sa loob ng batas na 'to ang ating mga family court para magtake ng jurisdiksyon ito over 'yung mga cases na involved dito. At tinataasan po natin ang mga liability at 'yung mga penalties pag mga bata in armed conflict ang nasasakop.
May naalala lang ako, Mister Sponsor, no? Wala yata ako nakita dito sa batas na ito 'yung pananagutan o magiging gagawin ng ating estado. Particular po ang Department of Education, halimbawa po sa mga evacuation areas. So, paano po, kasi sa nakikita ko, halimbawa ngayon, hindi po ba, pag nag-evacuate 'yung komunidad sa isang lugar, wala na, tigil na sa pag-aaral 'yung mga bata. Pero nowhere in this law or proposed law na nakikita ko, ano 'yung magiging aksyon? Kasi dito meron tong DPWH, et cetera. Pero ano ba 'yung aksyon ng Department of Education o responsibility po ng Department of Education na magpatuloy sa pag-aaral 'yung mga bata? Kasi parang wala pa akong nakita dito.
Maraming salamat po sa punto na 'yun. Kung mamarapatin po ng representante ng ACT, ay willing po kami magenterting ng proposed amendments niya dito sa nakikita niyang pagkukulang sa batas sa tamang panahon po.
Ituloy ko lang po, no, 'yung parang responsibility ng magulang ano, kasi wala namang magulang, 'yung gusto na hindi makapag-aral 'yung mga anak nila. So, in terms of conflict, mapipilitan sila na talaga mag-evacuate at is safety ang kanilang mga anak. At ang, at ang batas na ito, tingin ko, Madam Speaker, ginong sponsor, and duly expands the liability of parents without any reasonable justification at all. An effort of misdirection lays the blame on the parents of the child and not the cause of the war. Parang, parang tinitignan ko pag binabasa ko 'yung whole na batas na ito, parang tinitignan natin na ang pagsisisi, ang paninisay ay doon sa...
Natatoo ah, Madam Speaker, your honor. In fact po, kaya po... In fact po, kaya po, spinesify and initemize po 'yung mga relevant laws na relevant and applicable dito sa mga sitwasyon na'to. Wala pong extension outside of 'yung mga coverage ng existing laws na, na nagbibigay ng responsibilidad sa magulang para sa kanilang mga anak. 'Yung tinatawag po nating extraordinary diligence of a father of a family, of a good father of a family, and 'yung mga requirements ng batas para sa kanya po. Wala pong hinginging beyond this. In fact po, kung meron pong mas mataas po na restrictions and mas mataas po na liability, ang mga combatants o 'yung mga armed groups, o 'yung mga players sa armed conflict ang mas tinataasan at pinapatungan ng mas mahigpit na liabilities and responsibilities. Um, and this includes our own state forces, uh, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Uh, yun alam po, uh, Mr. Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Uh, so siyempre, pinapasalamatan ko ang ating sponsor dun sa napaka-patient na pagsagot dun sa mga tanong ko, kasi talagang, ang, kapag usapan po natin talaga 'yung conflict within our, our, our country, talagang malalim ang mga dahilan kung bakit nagkakaroon ng mga armadong pakikibaka at ang harassment, ang human rights violation ay talamak. Na nakita naman natin sa base dun sa mga, sinasabi po ng ating mga mamayan ay dulot ng uh, ng armed uh, government forces natin. Kaya po, uh, mahalaga na mabantayan kung paano po ito mai-implement ng maayos, o halimbawa, may mga gagawin tayong mga amendments dito at ma, ang primary purpose natin ay maproteksyonan talaga ang mga bata at ang kanilang mga karapatan para sa mga basic rights para sa kanilang pawumuhay. Uh, maraming salamat, Mr. Sponsor, Madam Speaker.
Thank you din po, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, next to interpolate is the lady from Kabataan. A move that recognize the Honorable Sarah Jean Elago.
The Honorable Sarah G. Elago is recognized.
Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Uh, just a few questions, uh, to our dear sponsor, to our distinguished sponsor.
Of course, uh, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Madam Speaker, uh, this is actually a welcome development that we are tackling, we are giving due diligence in discussing the uh, situation of children in areas with armed conflict. But for a president of uh, the Philippines that, who have threatened to bomb Lumad schools and even tagged children enrolled in Lumad schools as enemies of the state. This bill, if passed into law, could be used as an additional tool to terrorize not just children, but also their families and their communities. Ano pong masasabi dito ng ating distinguished sponsor?
Um, I'd like to think that conflict, 'yung pagiging biktima ng mga kabataan is uh, in armed, in situations of armed conflict, is a, is a continuing situation. It doesn't, it hasn't started with uh, our president now. It hasn't, and I am sure it won't end with him. However, that is precisely why we need this law. As of now, the only, the only existing protection I can think of is an EO, is an executive order, uh, uh, promulgated by a previous administration. And being an executive order, it is subject to the whims of the, what whichever administration is in place. And therefore, it can be, it can be reversed, it could be canceled, it could be superseded. However, if we put this into law, then uh, subject to our, uh, subject to our changing it, amending it, or repealing it in the future as a democratic institution, then this law and its uh, inherent protections for children, victims of armed conflict, will transcend the, this administration or whichever's administration succeeds it. Madam Speaker, your honor.
Madam Speaker, nabanggit ng ating uh, pangulo ang hingil sa napakarami at talagang vastly uh, unregulated even by the military, na, na mga binubuo nila ng mga paramilitary forces. At marami dito ang, inaabuso ang mga bata, ayun, para sa kanilang mga naisgawin. Paano po natin mai-insure, ayun, na kung sa kasalukuyan ay hindi nababantayan at kahit pa ang presidente na mismo ang nagsabi na dapat nambuwagin ang mga paramilitary forces na ito, magpahanggang ngayon ay narian pa rin. Uh, nag-ooperate, nagpapatuloy, at hindi natin natitiyak, hindi malinaw ang pananagutan.
Tama po.
Kung merong nagawang mali ang mga paramilitary forces na ito.
Tama po. Madami pong nagsasabi na ang dami ho nating batas na nagpro-proteksyon ng human rights, nagpro-proteksyon ng uh, ng kabataan, ng kababaihan. Uh, in fact, ang dami natin batas sa RPC. Pero alam din po ng mga ka, uh, mga kasamahan po natin na naglingkod na hindi ho perfect 'yung ating judicial system o 'yung sistema po natin. Kita po natin 'yan, hindi po talaga, hindi po lahat ng nagbabiyolate ng human rights ay nahahabol. Hindi po lahat ng uh, um, hindi po lahat ng krimen ay nahahabol. Pero sa batas na'to, nagiging malinaw 'yung mga poli, mga, mga, 'yung, 'yung definition ng uh, pagbibiktima ng mga bata sa situation of armed conflict, nagiging malinaw 'yung mga players involved, 'yung mga elements ng krimen nila, and pinapataw ng malinaw ang kanilang mga liability. And linilinaw din po 'yung mekanismo para ma-implement ito. Hindi ho ibig sabihin na perpekto to, subject din to, of course, sa implementation. And alam po natin na sa sitwasyon ng armed conflict eh malabo po ang mga bagay-bagay, 'yung tinatawag po nilang fog of war. Pero kaya po, lalong-lalo pong kailangan ng mga batas na katulad na'to para magkaroon ng konting sibilisasyon, ng konting humanity, ng konting morality ang armed conflict. At lalong-lalo na ho 'yung pagproteksyon ng mga kabataan.
Madam Speaker, malamang uh, mula doon sa sinabi ng ating distinguished sponsor na ma, na meron tayong mga kalagayan na hindi naman agad-agad na, na uh, mahuhulaan o makikita o uh, ma-expect natin, meron tayong binuod dito na isang panukala, hingil sa Inter-Agency Committee on Children in Situations of Armed Conflict. Maaari po bang maibahagi sa atin ng ating kagalang-galang na sponsor ang rationale sa pagpili ng mga miyembro ng Inter-Agency Committee na ito? Ito po ay binubuo ng
Siya?
Fifteen members.
Sandali na po.
Ito po ba ay, mamili lang ba tayo ng representante mula sa mga ahensya na nakalagay dito?
Ito po, uh, thank you very, um, eto po. Section 25 of the proposed bill creates the IAC CISA, chaired by the Commission on the Welfare of Children and composed of the following government agencies: AFP, CHR, DILG, DOH, DEPED, DOJ, DND, DSWD, the LGUs, NCIP, NCMF, NDRRMC, OPAP, PCW, and PNP. It also provides child-focused NGOs to take an active part in strengthening their programs and capabilities in delivering their services. The IAC CISA shall also serve as monitoring and reporting agency and submit their reports to the President and Congress. So, um, etong mga line agencies na directly involved or pwedeng nakita ng mga framers ng bill at 'yung mga nagtrabaho sa TWG na maaring ma-involve dito sa pag-rescue or pag-arbitrate na mga kabataan na nasa situations of armed conflict. And specific na specific, sa paragraph kasunod ng enumeration ng mga government agencies, 'yung pag-empower na mga child-focused and local community-based NGOs na mag-participate dito sa monitoring and implementation ng batas na'to. Madam Speaker, your honor.
Yes, Madam Speaker, may we know the rationale behind including uh, the AFP, the DND, and the PNP in this Inter-Agency Committee? Hindi po ba sila rin ay maaring masalang kapag sila naman ay may paglabag sa mga naturang, ang mga karapatan, ayun, sa loob ng, ng panukalang batas na ito ng ating kagalang-galang na sponsor? Madam Speaker, paano natin maiiwasan na magkakaroon ng cover-up?
Um, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Pagdating sa mga reklamo.
Kaya ho sila nandyan, kasi kailangan po nating kilalanin na sila ang armed forces ng gobyerno. Wala po tayong pwedeng sa konstitusyon natin, malinaw na malinaw, iisa lang po ang armed forces po natin. So, kailangan kasama po sila do'n. Pero that does not mean na hindi sila, na-exempt sila or hindi po sila liable pag 'yung mga elements nila ay nag-violate ng batas na'to. Therefore, I would think of it as an advantage na kasali po sila dito para directly na nakakalat sa kanila, directly napapaliwanag sa kanila kung ano ang restrictions nila when it comes to children in situations of armed conflict, when it comes to uh, minors or victims of, in situations of armed conflict. Pero, and lalo na po, dahil kasali sila, pag nag-violate sila at nag, naging liable po sila, eh, lalo po silang walang excuse. Kaya po, tingin ko lang po, dapat lang pong isama po sila. In the same light, na sinasama po natin 'yung mga civil society organizations, 'yung mga NGOs, 'yung mga POs, at mga child-focused na groups dito sa local implementation ng batas na'to. Because, in all likelihood, sila 'yung nandun sa conflict situations at sila 'yung nakakita ng uh, anong best para ma-implement itong batas na'to. Madam Speaker, your honor.
Madam Speaker, how does the distinguished sponsor envision the selection process of the representatives? Particularly of uh, the AFP, PNP, and the DND in this Inter-Agency Committee?
Um, I think, ayoko hong pangunahan, ayoko pong pangunahan 'yung mga magradraft ng implementing rules nito. Um, however, kung, kung ako lang po, ang, ang titignan po natin, dapat lang po sa top level. Kung pag-uusapan natin ang national, ang implementation ng batas na'to, kailangan po sa top level ng armed services po natin, PNP, ang AFP, at ang line services, nasa top level po nila ang nagpa-participate sa uh, implementation ng batas na'to. Para malinaw na malinaw din po 'yung restrictions, 'yung liabilities, at 'yung paraan ng implementation na'to. Top-down, dahil command organization po siya.
Madam Speaker, may tayo kasi, ang representasyon na ito ay nababahala na maaring magkaroon ng uh, ng paghuhugas kamay, ng cover-up, ng pagtatakip, ayun, sa kung ano ba 'yung, 'yung mga laging paglabag maski pa ng ate, ng mga pwesya ng ating gobyerno, ayun. Kaya uh, nararapat lamang na magkaroon din tayo ng uh, mga measures on, 'yung kung paano natin mapapagbantayan. Mekanismo para sa lalo pang mas mabilis na pananagutan ng mga pwesya ng ating gobyerno. Hindi natin makakalimutan na nitong nakaraan lamang abuan, April 21, ang pinakahuling natala, na kaso ng, ng pamamaslang at isa sa mga binanderan na kaso ng rebelde na bata ay isang labinglimang taunggulang uh, na nagmula sa Ipong National High School. Isa po itong batang Lumad na di umano ay uh, siya pinaslang, matapos siyang paslangin, ah, pinalitan ng damit, binihisan ng parang isang miyembro ng New People's Army. Uh, siya ay natamnan ng baril. Ang principal ng kanyang eskwelahan, mga guro, mga kapitbahay, maski po ang barangay captain, ay magsasabi at nagbigay na ng kanilang pahayag na ang batang ito, si June Mark Apto, ay hindi isang rebelding NPA. Ngunit, isang araw po matapos nangyari, ang, ang killing, ayun, sa kanya, nakabandera po sa mga jaryo na ang nahuli, ang napaslang ay isang rebelde. So, tayo po ay uh, talagang mariin na nababahala sa mga ganitong kaso, ayun. Kung saan, para lamang maipakita na nagtatagumpay ang, ang operation, ayun, laban uh, sa mga kalaban po ng gobyerno ay maski 'yung mga bata. Ganito po ang ginagawa sa kanila, at nagpapakalat pa ng maling impormasyon, ng mga paninira, at mga peking balita.
Maraming salamat po sa tanong na 'yan, your honor, Madam Speaker. Precisely po kung bakit kailangan natin itong batas na'to. Dahil up to now, eh, sa aking pagkaalala, ay wala po nitong Chapter 3, Section 9, Paragraph D, Item Number 4 ng panukalang batas na'to, which specifies false branding or labeling as a penalty under this law. Ibig sabihin, 'yung mga sitwasyon at 'yung mga kaso katulad ng binanggit niyo po, ay magiging liable na po under this law kung mapatunayan sa tamang forum. At 'yung mga forum, 'yung forum na pinag-uusapan po natin dito ay 'yung mga korte po natin. Your, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Madam Speaker, anong magiging papel ng panukalang batas na ito kung sakali na ito ay maipasa, ayun, sa ating uh, Seventeenth Congress? Doon sa mga kaso na naglabag, ayun, sa karapatan ng mga bata sa mga sitwasyon ng armed conflict? Para mapabilis 'yung, 'yung kanilang mga kaso para uh, ma, maidala, ayun, sa hustisia ang mga perpetrators ng mga kaso kung saan involved ang ating mga bata at kabataan?
Okay. Um, madaming, pwede nating isa-isahin, pero may isang significant na, na section nitong batas na'to na nagsasaad na 'yung mga pagbibiktima ng mga kabataan sa sitwasyon ng armed conflict ay isang krimen na akin to violation of international humanitarian law. And therefore, non-prescriptible. Anong ibig sabihin nito? Kung ikaw ay gumawa consciously, not nag-torture ng bata o pumatay ng bata, or uh, or uh, other similar situations sa, katulad no'ng sitwasyon na binabanggit ng uh, ng uh, representante ng kabataan, eh, kahit na ho thirty years from now, ay pwede ka pong habulin ng batas na'to dahil sa tantamount ito to violation of international humanitarian law. That is an example of the teeth, 'yung ngipin na binibigay po natin sa pag, uh, sa batas na'to para proteksyonan ang mga batang biktima ng armed conflict. Madam Speaker, your honor.
Yes, Madam Speaker, ang nais lang maipabatid, ayun, sa kagalang-galang na sponsor ng representasyon na ito, ay ang kanyang pagkabahala na ang mga may pinakamalaking impluwensya, ayun, sa loob ng ating Inter-Agency Committee on Children in Situations of Armed Conflict. Ayun, bagamat, nagbigay tayo ng puwang sa maraming people's organizations at sa iba't-ibang mga ahensya, ayun, para magkaroon ng boses, ayun, sa loob na ito. Ay, ang mga katulad mismo ng Philippine National Police. Ayun, kung saan may naiulat na may labing tatlo libo na mga kaso ng mga pamamaslang. Napakarami pa dyan mga sinasabing kaso ng nanlaban. Meron tayong mga nakasampa na kaso, maski sa Korte Suprema, na nais... na nais maisiwalat natin lahat ba talaga 'yan ay nanlaban? O ang libo-libo na 'yan ay katulad ng mga kabataan na sila Kian de Los Santos, sila Carl Arnais, na 'yung korte na rin ang nagsabi na deliberate at intensyonal ang killing sa mga bata na ito. And dyan din ang Department of National Defense na sinasabi nung nagkaroon po tayo dito ng deliberasyon para sa pagpapahintulot sa isa pang taon ng declarasyon ng martial law sa buong Mindanao. Ang sabi po nila ay wala daw nilabag na karapatang pan tao. Ngunit ang representasyon na mismo na ito ang sumali sa isang International Fact-Finding and Solidarity Mission. Kung saan naitalaan natin dito na hindi na pala maibilang ang mga human rights violations. At nangangailangan ang pag-eempower sa mas marami ng mga bata, mga kabataan, mga organizations na magkaroon sila ng boses para mapadinig sa mga hindi nakikinig sa kanila o nasasawalang bahala 'yung kanilang mga ulat hingil sa mga paglabag sa karapatang pan tao. Nariyan din po ang AFP na sa mata ng mga batang lumad na nag-aaral doon sa mga Lumad Schools na tinakot na bombahin at nakakaranas ng airstrikes. Nandyan din 'yung nakakaranas sila ng mga drones na hindi nila alam kung maglalaglag ba ng bomba. Nakikita nila kung paano na ang kanilang komunidad ay nalalagay sa panganib pag sila ay napagkakaitan ng katotohanan at pag sila ay hindi pinapakinggan. Yan ang sitwasyon na iniinugan natin ngayon hingil sa panukalang batas na ito. Kaya mainam na masusipang mapag-aralan at mailapat sa nararanasan ng ating mga kababayan. Lalong-lalo na bukas, May 23, isang taon na matapos na madeklara ang martial law sa Mindanao. Ang batas na ito ay sisikapi natin na magsilbi para dun sa mga walang boses at para dun sa hindi napoprotektahan ng ating batas. However, this may sound good on paper. Ang sabi nga po ng isang batang lumad, anong mailalaban ng aming mga bibig sa kanilang baril? Kaya sa mga ganyang sitwasyon na walang epekto ang mga batas na ito, mainam na ganun din kung paano tayo nagpupursigi na magpasa ng batas na ito ay magkaroon ng mga signifikanteng reforma para tunay na mabigyan ng boses at maiangat 'yung kabuhayan, hindi lang ng mga bata, ng kabataan, kundi ng taong bayan, Madam Speaker. Kaya po, at itignan, kung ito ay magdudulot ba ng mas panganib o makabubuti sa ating mga batang Pilipino? Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, since there are no amendments, I move to close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 7442.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of 7442 on second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 7442 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 7465, in Committee Report Number 685. And please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General so-directed.
House Bill Number 7465, An Act Requiring New Personnel of the Bureau of Fire Protection to be Certified Emergency Medical Technicians, Amending for the Purpose Sections 3 and 8 of Republic Act Number 9263 as amended, otherwise known as the Bureau of Fire Protection and Bureau of Jail Management and Penology Professionalization Act of 2014.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open this period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period for sponsorship and debate is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Public Order and Safety, the Honorable Romeo Acop.
The Honorable Romeo Acop is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. May I respectfully request that we adopt the sponsorship, ah, the explanatory note as my sponsorship speech, Madam Speaker?
With that, Madam Speaker, I move that we have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, since there are no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby opened.
Since there are no amendments, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 7465.
There is a motion to approve on second reading, House Bill 7465. All those in favor, please say aye. Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 7465 is hereby approved on second reading.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 7445, in Committee Report Number 662.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 7445, An Act Promoting the Development of Entrepreneurship Skills Among Government Employees to Inspire Innovativeness and to Ensure Their Productivity Even Beyond Government Service.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the Honorable Binkin Noel.
The Honorable Binkin Noel is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to manifest that I am adopting the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, with that, I move that we have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted.
Madam Speaker, since there are no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move to open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, since there are no amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 7445.
There is a motion to approve on second reading, House Bill 7445. All those in favor, please say aye. Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 7445 is hereby approved on second reading.
Madam Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill Number 7373, 7437, 7445, 7446, 7525, and 7652, as contained in the lists to be submitted by the Committee on Rules. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we transmit to the Senate the bills that we just approved on third reading.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until tomorrow, May 23, 2018, at four o'clock in the afternoon.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The session is adjourned.